Again, by the clock, what's probably the order? We are locating the lower center of Town Hall. There's a Zoom link on the agenda and a phone number.
So that being said, the first me item on the agenda is the meeting of the liquor commissioners. And thank God, we only have one tonight instead of 15. So the one that's applying is Fire Energy LLC Group 103 for a second class license. Take a motion to approve or deny?
I approve the license for Fire Energy LLC.
Second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? Motion made seconded to approve the liquor license or second class license to Fire Energy LLC. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. May, who carries? And coming around for the visitors. Hey, continue on. Let's prove the minutes of April 18th, 2023. Make a motion.
Prove your approval since April 18th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Motion made seconded to approve the minutes of April 18th, 2023. Any further discussion, deletions, corrections, omissions, et cetera? Seeing hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
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 Additions to the agenda for routine administrative management or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting. I have none, Scott?
No, I don't have this. We're just a brief executive session at the end of the meeting. There is an item we have to address.
Four days, no additions?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move right along to public comment on items not on the agenda. Where if you public here except for a group to my left, you're right, we know what they're here for. They're on the agenda. So next item we have is the manager report.
So a couple items, so I'm sure if you haven't seen, you will be seeing shortly that there have been more EMS issues within the southern Vermont area now, more so on the other side of the river this time with Keene. So one of their private ambulance services is a business and now Rescue Inc. is going to be providing support. We have sent some information to our regionally EMS committee about our current situation with our coverages, with our current contract and our over reliance on our partners across the river in Walpole and the number of mutual aid calls that they've had to come over and address here, which has been growing every year. And so we have run data now from the fire department from Walpole and have sent that to our EMS committee. For some reason, Vermont is looking at these problems across the state, but they don't have information on border communities when a first responder comes from across the river. So they had no idea that we had, for example, already in the first four months, almost five months of this year, we've had over 45 calls across to Walpole for EMS coverage, just in Rockingham and Bellis Falls. So our problems are becoming more regional. We wanted the regional folks to step in and start to look at some solutions that might be regional based solutions because this issue is obviously larger than this one community or two communities can really start to address. So we'll keep you informed. At the moment, we still have ambulance services with Golden Cross and we'll hopefully have some way to continue that. But as you can tell, we're having some real challenges here to maintain some staffing and service levels, so to be continued.
Is that something that we could work on?
I think the only solution can be regional. I don't see any other way to make it work. There just aren't that many providers and, you know, the problem is the business model is very challenging. EMS providers that are in the business because of the way reimbursements work and how much money they can actually collect, it just makes it difficult. And then they're running into the same staffing problems that everybody else is running into, trying to find people that are trained and qualified. So it's a, it's a real concern.
Question, Scott? Could the Rescue Inc., I noticed that they're hiring an additional 30 folks to cover Keene, bringing their headcount up to 110 employees, which was amazing number. Would there be any chance that we might consider Rescue Inc. or are they too far away?
You'd talk to them. The problem is, is they don't have any other folks that are this far north. So they would have to, their business model wouldn't work unless we had other communities involved. So we would have to talk to Chester, we'd have to talk to Springfield, we'd have to talk to a host of folks, including Walpole, to really make this work. So that's the goal of trying to get the regionality EMS folks involved and seeing is there some solution that we can sit down and look at regionally to see what we can do. So they're evaluating the data. They really haven't given me much in terms of, is there a meeting or a specific time or date when we can try to get into it in more detail as soon as I find that out, let everybody know.
One of the things that we're doing at the Regional, myself and another woman on the executive board have been interviewing town managers all around the region. And we had a great conversation with Scott and to find out how the Regional could help communities combine in things like this. Could the Regional get a big grant and be the one hiring people to provide some services? And then bill it out to the towns or just whatever, we're working on that. We have a meeting next week. So that's something we're definitely looking at at the Regional Commission.
Scott, are we, I'm sorry, are we being, are we being billed by Walpole for every call and is our budget within limits?
Well, they have just, much like Springfield has recently said they're going to have to start billing for the balances because in the past, what they would do is they would build whatever the client was. And if they were not reimbursed, they were not coming back to charge the community. And Springfield, as of March, has told us that they can't continue to do that. So they're going to start to balance bill. And Walpole said because of the volume and the impact on their services, they're going to have to start to balance bill as well. So you will start to see some impacts on our, our budget.
There's two new ones.
Yep, oh, two new ones, okay. Nothing yet though, Rick. We have not received any bills yet from outside parties yet. But they put us both on, you know, they put us on notice and not in a nasty way, just in a, you know, this is a problem for them. They're going to have to come up with a way to try to keep their service flowing, so.
Okay.
Any other questions, the manager? All right, hearing done, let's move along on the agenda. First item is the group on my left, which is Sam Carlson from Green Lantern Solar Presentation on the Stickney property, who are also present. So that being said, there is a package of information and Mr. Carlson, will you step up to the table?
Thank you.
We'll let you have your spiel.
Evening, Sam Carlson. I'm with Green Lantern Solar. We're based in Waterbury, primarily a Vermont based solar company. We do a little bit of work in the rancher and Maine as well. We've done probably about 100 solar projects around the state of Vermont. I've been with Green Lantern since about 2015. The project that's before you now is a 500 kilowatt solar project, which would take up about three acres of land that is owned by the Stickney family. And as you said, the Stickneys are here this evening to answer any questions of the landowners. The land that the Stickneys selected for the solar project is the least productive agricultural land on that parcel. Very rocky, very bony, has some odd soils and odd drainage as well. So their, the productivity of the corn they grow there is not what it is in the rest of the parcel. You should have a sketch in front of you that shows that three acre array that would then be on the north and northeastern side screened with vegetation. Vegetation would be 10 to 12 feet high. We don't want to shade the corn that the Stickneys will be growing north of the array. The vegetation would be, what you see in front of you, there are several different varieties that are being proposed to provide that vegetated screening. Most of it is a flowering shrubbery, attract pollinators, that's going to attract birds and bees, some insects. You'll see, you may have seen an earlier sketch of the array where the access road was going to be running sort of in the middle of the field and actually go into Saxons River Village. At the Stickneys' request, we have moved that access road to the west side of the field. So it would be further away from the houses there on Pleasant Valley Road. And also at the Stickneys' request, we've proposed an underground interconnection. So there will be no power poles going across the cornfield, which they felt would be unsightly. And so we've agreed to do an underground connection. In your package of things, in additions to the sketch, you'll see sort of what we call a critical path or an indicative timeline, all the steps we have to go through to get this project reviewed and permitted. You are our last step at the local level. The next step would be going to the Wyndham Regional Planning Commission in early June. And if we get over that, then we go to the state. And that, that process would start in mid-June probably. And of course, this project would have to get reviewed by the Agency of Natural Resources, Vermont Department of Historic Preservation, the Vermont Department of Public Service, Public Utility Commission, et cetera, et cetera. That's probably a six month permitting process. If all goes well, we would receive the permit from the Public Utility Commission in maybe January of 2024. We wait until springtime and in an ideal world, from our standpoint, we would be building this project in April and May of next year. The, I think the key question for the select board at this time is whether you would consider this site a preferred site for solar development. That's a legal term that the Public Utility Commission has come up with. And there are, each town in a sense has criteria for what constitutes a preferred site. That criteria is included in the draft energy chapter of the town plan that the planning commission has been working on. And we would argue that this project aligns with that criteria. There's a minimal, as far as we can tell, there are no real negative environmental impacts. The only real environmental impact would be our need to clear probably about 25 trees that are 40 feet tall and higher to the southeast of the array to prevent shading of the array during the morning hours. We would not need to clear any trees to the south of the array. It would just be in that little pocket of trees that sort of divides those two parcels of land. And those trees would be, would work for the Stickneys to take those down in a very careful way. We're bringing in a skitter and this would be a capital intention, right down sort of that by hand and to avoid disturbance as much as we could. We're hoping that the select board will consider this project a preferred site. We think there are very, we've done all we can to minimize the aesthetic impacts, the environmental impacts, any loss of agricultural productivity by selecting less productive land. We would also, in our filing to the, to the state, commit to not mowing between June 1 and August 1, which is the critical breeding time for the bobble lake. So we would not be mowing during that time. So we want to work with the town as much as we can to make this a positive for the town. I'll conclude with the last two bits. We estimate payments to the town in the form of taxes, both on the solar facility and on the increased property tax that would come by taking the land out of current use and having it taxed at its highest and best use. The combined effect of that would be just shy of $1,000 a year in additional taxes for the town. Saxons River Village trustees voted in March to approve this site as a preferred site. And the planning commission, March 30th, approved this site as a preferred site for solar development. So I will stop there and see if you have any questions or concerns that I could address.
Yeah, looking at this map here, if you look at the, we're in the sections of PG 6, there's two houses there on the left hand side of Cory Hill, one on the right.
Yep.
Looks like they may overlook kind of that, is there a screening? There doesn't look like there's screening except for the correction of the trees that are there currently. I don't know.
Right, so.
Because I thought the hills, that five house especially is right at the very top of the hill.
Yep.
Where range is often, I don't know if they're going to be able to look down or take in contact in regards to this.
Yes, so we did send them a letter. And February, early March, it was before the Saxons River trustees meeting to let them know about this. In that sketch that you see where it says PG 6, you'll see a little black line that then ties into six or seven little green circles there. Those are white spruce that we would propose to plant in that one clear area to block the view. Otherwise, that tree line is fairly consistent. So we had landscape architects come down, look at that view from the neighbors and they sort of said, we need to fill in that open spot with some spruce. So that'll be, you know, year round screening. We can't go with spruce out in the field, obviously, because they grow too big. We'll end up changing the array and it would look kind of weird actually out of the corner of the eye that. Your pardon?
Yeah. Well, I just, that's what I say. I used to be on the project review committee at the Regional. And from my recollection, you might have some arguments, but this would be considered a preferred site. You know, I expect that they will go along with that.
Question, Peter?
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
How many off takers have been signed up? Is there, is there a minimum number that the, of off takers that have to be found before the project can proceed?
So it's, it's, off takers, it's always a cart and a horse question. We can't really sign up off takers until we have a permit. Because until we know we've got a project, they're not going to sign a legal contract to purchase the net metering credits from the array. That said, we've had very good luck in working with towns and schools and ski areas around Vermont. And now increasingly, some of the manufacturing companies that also have significant electricity bills. And we have not had a problem in finding off takers. Obviously, from our perspective, we're interested in finding large off takers, large consumers of electricity because we want to minimize our administrative transaction costs of billing every month for the net metering credits that are being sold at a discount to, to the off taker. So they save on their electricity bill. We work with Sugar Bush, we work with Smugs, we work with Mount Snow. We also work with probably 15 or 20 school districts and probably another 20 towns around the state. Anywhere in Green Mountain Power territory, we, we can sign up as an off taker. But we do not have right now a list of off takers because I don't have a CBG yet to go and market.
Right, as you know, the town of, we have a solar array going in by Novus Solar on Route 103 in the gravel, former town gravel pit. And Scott, you can tell me, we were, we were missing one taker for the project to proceed, last I heard. Can you bring us to, up to date on that?
He sent me an email today and said he thinks he has everything in alignment. So he's looking to start sometime probably over the summer, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Has the town energy committee looked at this?
The energy commission, the energy committee, right.
Right, we had two meetings with the planning commission.
Right.
I don't know if, I have not made a presentation to the energy.
That would be the concentration committee, basically. There's one of the same.
Hopefully, yeah. I mean, the planning commission thought it met the town plan and I don't think it's a problem for us. You know, the ones who drafted it, they are.
I don't see anything with us at all.
Yeah, no.
But didn't you have one?
Just mention on that, the planning commission guy Payne said Mike Gia wanted to, on the C, so he's part of the energy.
Right.
Commission. So yeah, Mike is like in conversation.
Right.
I am, I'm not sure if he toured.
They have not yet. I actually mistakenly went upstairs to the third floor when I got here. And so I talked to Gary because the Stickneys have actually been waiting to be contacted by Gary to arrange for a visit from anyone on the Conservation and Energy Commission that wants to go and see. I think their concern was really about the extent of tree clearing that was going to be required. And as I, I walked it just before coming here, there are probably about 25, max 30 trees, mainly old, old pines and.
There were sugar beetles.
Not that I.
You're not doing any sugar.
They wouldn't let you cut the maple, that's for sure.
Not there.
I wouldn't either.
Okay, anything else, Rick?
No, that's fun.
All right, we have a consensus that Scott, if you get a letter of agreement to agree that this is a preferred site and get it back, so do you go board to sign that?
It's just the chair.
Yeah. All right, yes, that's me. So is that, that's fine, let's, we'll sign it. Scott, you can give me an order log and sign it.
Great.
We all set with that?
Yeah.
Good job, man.
Thank you, appreciate it. And Scott has my contact. So if any folks in town have questions, please have them get in touch with me. Happy to meet with them, talk with them on the phone, do whatever, but more information is good, more questions are good. So, and Scott, Gary said that he had, you have a signed letter from the planning?
I do, which is in the package that this.
Yeah, I have. So I'm sure.
Yep.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thanks, it's Thickney again for coming in.
Yeah.
Nice to see them.
Thanks.
We've been picking stones there since the 1960s.
There is a big pile there.
I always think of the place of the way, I think it's the way the London, because in the London area, you just see this hill full of stone and you're like, God, they better put a solar panel something.
Oh, no, you want them to stay.
But yeah, you want to stay and listen to the boring stuff, sure.
Utility poles on 121 are next.
That's, that's a problem. I got a problem with that.
We got Franklin on the, on the Zoom, so we could chat, so.
Thanks again for your time.
All right.
Thank you guys, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to third item on the agenda, which is a GMP application for Route 121, baseline power line reconstruction project on permanent request. There is some information in your packet.
Yep.
Representative is here from on Zoom from Green Mountain.
Franklin, yeah, he's a consultant. He's working on this project with Green Mountain Power. And I'll let him update you on someone specific. This is going to be a multi-phase project because it's basically part of their storm hardening, that they're going to be improving this area for storm resistance. So it's part of a larger, you know, multiple phase project, but this is the first piece of it. And with that, we do have Franklin Austin on the Zoom here. So Franklin, you want to jump in?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. This project originates in Westminster and it crosses the town line into Rockingham. This phase of the project is continuing up to the intersection of Barber Park Road. We're going to stop there because we have new construction beginning at Barber Park and continuing up past Ski Bowl. Thereafter, once, once this piece is permitted and we get the material ordered, we're going to leapfrog and we're going to continue up toward the village of Saxons River. We're going to design that out, permit that out. We're going to stop at the bridge going into the village because the facilities going through the village are in pretty good shape for the time being. We're going to pick it back up in the future at the intersection of Cory Hill and Pleasant Valley Road. And from that point, we're going to continue up Cory Hill within the existing corridor and then drop down to 121, then continue up to the grafton town line. These other two remaining phases of the project are slated to be constructed in 2023.
So is this not the, is this not beyond the river, riverbank side or on the landslide? Because I know that if you further get out towards Western Saxons River, there's a whole inside full of trees there, a whole of a problem. But I was coming down across the line.
So, yeah, we're, the plan is to replace, is to rebuild it in the existing corridor. And the reason for that is we're trying to, we're trying to encourage the communication companies to participate in the project, transfer to the new poles so we can get the old poles out of there. If we relocate the line significantly, past experience tells us communications do not move. So we end up with dual, dual lines along the road.
And you also end up with dual poles because there's one there in the Kesar property that's been broken off for two years now from a car accident. And they, that resulting on it is cell phone and the cable. And I frustrates the hell out of me that we can't get them to take those poles.
Well, if you notice, Franklin and I talked about that. So in the, in the, in his proposal on that, on the first page, there is a, an actual, he added some language in there about removal of the abandoned poles. And that's an important term in terms of the Public Service Commission because as Franklin stated, Green Mountain can move their facilities, which they've done or will do. And then if the other companies don't follow suit, then the pole can't be removed. So then we have to go to Public Service Commission, file an action in order to force them. Under law, they're supposed to move within 60 to 90 days.
That's correct.
Now, you know, they have, and some of these poles have been.
They've been in there for several years.
Since Hurricane Irene.
Right.
So.
And that's not the only section. There's other places in the village and.
Oh, there's, there's.
Unnecessary and nothing, no matter what happens, we try to do, nobody, we don't have any luck about getting those things removed. It's ridiculous.
Well, I think the only, only way we're going to get any satisfaction, we're going to have to file a formal complaint with the Public Service Commission.
Good luck with that.
It's a process.
I think it goes through one ear and out the other.
But once, once those are filed, they do take notice because there are sanctions that the PSC can do that makes the other companies take notice, so.
Yeah, I feel that sense, but Peter?
I will say one thing, you need to do a little appropriating. You got to say the installation of a new heaver. I think you mean heavier line instead of a heaver.
Oh, I must have not had my, my glasses on.
It rises and lowers to put it upon the cross line.
I just, no, no, Sam, I just.
It's new technology.
He be here? Oh. Well, good eye. Well, good eye.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Uh, Franklin, the only other question was within the right of way itself. There's discussion and it's down the road about we, we'll have to do some work on this road at some point. And. If we doing survey or any other kind of work, if we could share some of your. Some of your information that would be beneficial to us down the road when we're looking to do right away and reconstruction on that section of.
In as far as. Um, state archive type of information.
Are you doing any survey for the new pole locations or are you just?
It, it's not, it is not survey. It is layout and I have a hand asthma. And basically we're calculating degree angles. It's not. What you folks would need to do a asphalt job. But his, there is, I, I could just drop this. There is, uh, some estate plan from nineteen fifty nine. That I could forward you some of the information on.
That'd be great. Be a good source document because we're, we're not ready to start this project yet, but it's on the board's. Horizon is coming up. So we're going to have to start doing some of this work here in the next couple of years.
Yeah, it's probably going to widen the, uh, the road area there, uh, for a sidewalk lane. I mean, a bike lane, et cetera. So, um, that's, that's why probably about a three foot, four foot lane from.
We gotta really look at it.
Inside the road. So you're looking at eight foot width there, but it's, it's a total reconstruction out there. So it's not one of these where you can just overlay the pavement. It's going to be torn up and gravel. The base is going to be done. Culverts going to be put in, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Yeah. It's going to be. It's not just a repave. It's a major reconstruction.
It's a big project, but it's complete yourself. So we can finally with it.
Yeah, mo- most of the construction on this phase of the project is on the south side. Of twenty one.
Okay.
So you need a motion to, uh.
So based on this, we, we're asking a select board is to, uh, authorize. This, um. This application so that he can, he can submit this.
So you want to sign this? You want me to sign? So do you want fully authorized?
I think we should just have you sign, have the board do a, do a, just a basic, um. Authorization and then we can have Peter sign it.
All right, take a motion to, uh. Prove the authorization for GMP for pole relocation on Route one twenty one.
So just Phase One, now make sure you have that on there. There will be more phases to come.
Oh, yes, I know. We're second. Those are making second to approve the authorization for a Phase One, uh, expansion of the rope line on Route one twenty one. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing hearing none, all of the people would say aye.
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 All of the poles, hey, well, Jerry.
Peter, I just got a copy for signature. Right there. But. Franklin, I'll get you a copy of that. I'll send that off to you, the signed copy.
Okay, Scott, and I'll send you an email with the, uh, state project info.
Well, that's great. That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, next item is the updated galvanizing information on People's Street Bridge, which was requested. You have a letter in your packet. Along with some pictures.
So originally there was a link and there was a rather long presentation. That really the one slide that I presented to you was, was part of this whole conversation about duplex coding systems and. I think the engineers wanted to just make sure the board has some additional information about. The specifics about what, what the impacts might be in terms of how that would impact our decision for galvanizing. And some of the issues about what would be the issues specifically at our location. Um, I, I think originally this, you know, we've had multiple discussions. It really doesn't give us any additional locations. But I think it's just more background and detail for you in terms of. How that decision impacts you going forward in terms of, uh. Potential costs and other exposures with that project, so.
So it's just the same as what we've been told, actually. There's just anything new, really.
It's a little more up to, it's a little more detailed than some of the previous discussions.
And this is the pedestrian bridge, right, Scott?
It's for, it's for both, though. Right.
Can we split, can we split those apart or do they have to be the same treatment for both bridges?
Um. My understanding from DOT is that they are going to specify. Just one. One option. On the, on the, on the, because they have to send it out and get it manufactured and. Get it galvanized, so.
Do you have your patch, Rick?
No, I don't. I'm, I'm in Georgia. Didn't get.
Last paragraph there is something about metalizing the vehicle bridge. And the town has decided to only galvanize the pedestrian bridge. By the paint and they, then they go on to further describe the difficulties of getting. Because of the distance between the girders and the water, trying to get in there and inspect that and repaint. Blah, 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 you know, the same issues we, we've talked about in the past. That's why they're, they're really steering us away from the repaint job or painting it.
So what, so. Didn't you just say we have to do both bridges the same? God, is that?
Metalizing is a little different than galvanizing.
It's a different process, but it's still not a painting.
Right.
Well, one clarification, I would just like to point out, um, I think that with the vehicular bridge. The, the two main components of that are the steel girders, which are under the bridge. And then the steel railings, which are the part that's visible. Um. I believe that they could. Metalize the steel girders, but then this, the railings are. Really more of a cosmetic part that's, um, not really part of the. You know, the real structure of the bridge. So the.
Well.
The difficulty in dealing with those would be a little bit different than the girders. The girders, I mean, it really does make sense to just have them metallized. There really wouldn't. Be any point in painting them. Because they're under the bridge, you can't really see them.
Yeah, I think we still don't have the, um. Feedback on the style of the railing on the bridge. Because I, I know that the person from the state who was doing that historic, uh, and working with the plan historic commission. Was out of touch for until I think this week. I don't think he's back. So at some point there'll be a conversation, there'll be a, a second piece of information will become with the board. Once that's sort of added to that process at least. So. And that deals specifically with the railings and the rail design and what options might be available for that.
My other question on the pedestrian bridge, this might be something to ask them is. The, the real concern that they've raised is accessing the underside of the bridge, uh, because of the distance between the water and the girders. But there again, um, nobody can really see the underside of the bridge. So could we ask them if, is there a way to paint just the arches on the sides? But not the underside of the bridge.
And I have a question, Peter.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Um, the pedestrian bridge is going to be, uh, lifted on by a crane and built elsewhere. It's going to be, as I understand, I was speaking with the engineers. So I don't see why they have to both be the exact same thing. They're being manufactured. One is sort of being. Stick built as it were on site. The other one's going to be lifted in as a rebuilt unit. So I, I don't get why we have to do the same thing for both bridges. I, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, they're not specifically doing the same thing. Metalizing is one process, galvanizing is another. So. It's not doing the same for both bridges. It's just a matter of whether, as Alon just mentioned, uh. They galvanize the girders underneath the pedestrian bridge. They're going to metallize the girders. Some of the other ones are perhaps metallized both of the girders that are underneath the bridge. And then, uh, the result is of whether they're going to paint and what type of railing you're going to put on the vehicle bridge. Which is by the railroad bridge or, and then paint the actors on the, uh, pedestrian bridge. But then again, we're still looking at. Future maintenance down road, the cost of, of, uh, the maintenance that, which we already got a number thrown out there, so.
But that was for maintaining painted stuff all the way underneath. If we're only going to paint the top of the pedestrian bridge. It, it wouldn't be such a big deal.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest you look at this PowerPoint because I, I, we had our discussion, I found this PowerPoint and. They is in New York, I think, Pennsylvania, I forget. So it's not. Too far away. It's not like it's down where they don't, it was salt. And I, you know, even within ten fifteen years, there's massive paint chips that they, you know, they went around and they had, they did some maintenance on. But it was clear to me that painting was not the way to go because. Particularly because of where we have this bridge, even if you have to paint the railing. Or if you have big paint chips going into the power canal, and, and I don't know what it'd be. I mean, there are chunks like this that were coming off the bridge.
Really?
According to the photos, whether they all came off at once, I don't know, but. I, my, my worry is that we, we are responsible for whatever goes into that canal and goes into that power structure.
Now, was it?
So I would, I would suggest you look at this PowerPoint because it went point by point.
Is there a link on that?
I didn't provide the link.
Is that, is that link that's on?
It's in Sue's original email.
That you had on your Facebook?
Yeah, I didn't suggest this, Scott.
Yeah, it's on Sue's original email.
Oh, you got it.
Can, can you send it to everybody?
I can send it to the board.
I mean, and it really made it clear to me that painting is not the way to go.
So we're talking about this system that they're talking about here?
It's due. But it's like twenty eight pages and then they go from bridge to bridge to bridge and they discuss the rating and how long, how many years it lasted and. Any expense, the expense, they had some really high numbers for.
I know that, uh, when I came down to handle it, I specifically looked at that pretty come over like that again, that looks like it's been painted. And then they're stopping them off and they kind of, it looks like a spotted dog because it's the color.
Really, yeah.
Yeah, that's where they painted or put building the missing chunks. It's darker paint because of the weather. So I'll let you paint the whole thing and, you know, it's a matter of expense. So is that?
I'll send that link to the board.
All right.
I, I've got a question though for my donor. So what is the difference between metallizing and galvanizing?
Galvanizing is actually a dipping process.
Yeah.
And I think metalizing is not, um, it's not a specific coating as much as it is a, um, way that it's manufactured.
Right.
So that it, so that it wears differently.
They explained it to us the first time, the second time or third time they were here, that what the difference was.
But if you galvanize steel, dip into a.
If you ever watched a car being made, they, they have this big pool of galvanized.
Yeah, they dip it in there.
Dip it right in.
Well, I mean, that's like, like a trash can is galvanized, right?
Oh, yeah.
So it is supposed to be all silvery like.
Well, it will be for two years, but the minute it's.
It does. It doesn't come out, it doesn't look like you're, you're, like, I understand what you're saying. It doesn't have that kind of sheen to it.
When the first one month, they were nice and shiny, but two years later, after they've been. Snowed on and salted and everything else, they, they darken out. So you don't notice as much.
What would happen if you got this galvanized and then you just went out with some black spray paint?
It may not adhere, that's the problem. Can't, you know.
Rusty, maybe?
A lot of much more ruck of, but some metal primer. The whole.
A lot of be out there with your rusty, I don't think that.
Okay, we'll wait till we get some further information on, uh, that process.
Oh, God.
And like I said, the rest was still, still to be determined, so.
All right.
That does not happen.
Now let's go on to discuss, uh, organic disposal policy of recycling center and offsite organic materials. This came about because there's complaint about. Some people not being able to dump material at the stump dump, as they call it, Saxons River. At the end of Bellevue Avenue, like five volts, but that's the gate. Now I wasn't going to walk in the button to check when I got home, so.
Hmm. There's never been a.
There were more of those up around the corner.
It goes away.
Something there, yeah.
And so basically that's a turnaround. So when they plow out there, the guys will go out there in winter and that's how they turn around and that comes through.
I never went out there, even when it was open, though.
And I don't know how this has happened because there's no formal board policy that was ever adopted, but apparently there was always this verbal. Understanding to leave it at that, that people could, if they were aware of the opportunity, dump. Organic materials there. So over time, uh, some people knew about it and did it. I'm not sure everybody knew about it, quite frankly, because it was never a formal. Facility with hours or procedures or even, you know, relatively, you know, it was just. A word of math kind of, uh, situation. So. It had become difficult for us to get in the winter time to get through there. So. Our highway guys went in there, cleaned it out and put up a chain to sort of stop it from getting piled up again with debris. And had a few phone calls on board, Saxons River Board were. Inquiring as to the reasons why this is no longer available to folks as a dumping opportunity for materials.
So they can take brush and stuff down to the recycling center. It's free and, you know, we've got an area.
Were they putting food and stuff over there?
Well, there was some trash that was getting out there periodically. Unfortunately, if you have an un.
Yeah.
You know, an un.
Down the site as we.
Monetary facility, things start to show up.
Sure, yeah.
Right.
Especially this week.
Yeah.
Now it's going to be picked up on Saturday.
Yeah, well, that's always the case. We had Green Day for sure. But so it raised some hackles from some folks and I think they wanted to see what the board's position was, if they thought that there was any way the board would intervene. So. We're just bringing it to your attention.
They want us to intervene and, and say.
Go ahead, do it.
Go ahead and do it. I think we should do that.
No.
Well, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention because like I said, there were some people that were fairly annoyed.
Maybe you do that, then you'll end up with tires and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
Because on a site like I say, down around the corner, you don't see it, so.
The only other thing I think we could do is on our, our yard materials, our policy says up to two inches in diameter for leaves and grasses and small brush. Uh, most of the time the guys are pretty reasonable. They'll take stuff, but you know, we could, we could even take up to four or five inches if the board really wanted to. So we could modify. That, anything bigger than that, quite frankly, if somebody's cutting down something bigger than that, they probably should split it and put it in their fireplace over the winter and burn it anyway.
So somewhere.
So.
Apparently it's become stumps when you grind them.
And we don't want stumps. Nobody wants stumps. Stumps are the.
So I mean, that's what they were.
Right.
That's where the word stump dump came from, that's where they used to.
And is that what they would throw in there? Stumps as well? Are they growing in?
Yeah.
A little bit.
And Scott said, I think it was one of those things that this one knows that one and that one. So we got sure, go ahead and go up there and dump it, you know?
Yeah.
And then the next person says, oh, they let me do it. So like, see, oh, you got a whole horde of people going in there.
Right.
So we got to put a stop to that.
I mean, I imagine like residents within the village. If they need to take down a big tree, it's going to be a huge stump. They've got to get a tree company in.
Right.
And it's their job to.
Right.
So, so, and anyone else who's like, like I, it just goes in my backwoods, you know? If I have my land.
Right. Or they're big enough to season it and burn it at some point, so.
Question, Scott, do the, do the neighbors have any, have the neighbors expressed any, any interest in this issue?
Interested in terms of it being an annoyance or interested? I've gotten a couple of phone calls from people that would like to see it stay open. But none of the neighbors have called that have said that it's been. An ongoing concern directly now.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, we all said this. Let's move on to the next item, which is the application of alcohol on missing property waypoint for the Rotary BFF. I guess that's a folly or some sort?
Well, it's not a folly. It's a music festival. I think Bessie can give you some feedback if you're interested. But it's a fundraiser. For the Rotary. It's going to be a. Mostly a family type of an event. They'll have multiple bands and music, a stage. We'll have some food trucks. They will have some guys. Kind of like at the Flan Festival, we've never been there, where they have a little beer guy that does beer kind of thing. So. And I'm looking to recreate Woodstock or to recreate Roots on the River. It's just a smaller sort of low key kind of event.
No Woodstock.
We will be keep taking slides in the mud. Although maybe, yeah. I suppose maybe that, you know, you get that kind of notoriety, maybe it's like a big deal. That's the sort of thing. They do, they would like to come in for that. For that, that one.
Okay, the information is in the packet. Um. So does, uh, someone might want to make a motion to approve or deny?
Yeah, I have moved to reapprove, uh. Approve this, uh. Uh, application for the Bell's Sports Bridge, because there are a lot of those players having an event on June tenth. Uh, application for the Bell's Sports Bar, Club of the Wild Goose Players, having an event on June tenth. With winter served, uh. By.
Done.
Governor.
Who was also then doing the event for the alumni the week after?
This doesn't run into the, the alumni.
No, this is the week before, or alumni is the week after, they've already coordinated all that, so.
Okay. Do we have a second or monkey?
No, second.
To approve the alcohol use on municipal property at the Wake Point. For the Rotary Club and Wild Goose Players, uh. On June tenth. Uh, and for the discussion, questions? Hearing none? All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the both may, motion carries? I'll sign my old John Henry article. Alright. Adoption committee process, five-year social services, there's the, the package.
So we had looked at this once before, and so this is the second time around. The, the idea here, and I think we're at that five-year window where we have to do a reevaluation. Will social services levy, so. Um, we, we looked around and we found that, uh, this basically was another community's process, and looked like it was fairly substantial and. Seemed to cover the bases, so, share that with Peter, Peter said, why don't you adopt it and we'll bring it to the board. That's basically what this is. Um, the other thing that he's raised, and it's something that maybe the board wanted to consider, is I think. This community had a minimum of a thousand dollars for a threshold level for somebody to be considered for a social services levy. Um. Payment. Um. So I just copied that. And if I remember correctly, with the current listing that we have, I'm not sure there's anybody that gets under a thousand dollars, I couldn't be wrong.
I think there's three of them on there, there was.
The only one, Remont RS.
Yeah, I don't know if these were.
It's the only one.
The woman with crisis center, they have.
Was crisis center, I mean, just. We're afraid of potential. Now, the only one is one, Remont RS.
So.
So that was. And the idea.
Remont.
That's, uh, it's a, yeah, it'll be for assistance to all age, you know, for all of people. I don't want to call it R S V P.
So the way this would work is. If you approved this policy, we would. Put together an ad hoc committee that would go and. Reach out to the various, uh, folks who would be interested in coming in, it would be a process where they would be vetted. And then there would be some feedback through that process about. What would be funded or put on for the next social services levy for the next town meeting. So that it would, uh, you know, the board would have a chance, and once the vetting was done through the committee. To look at all of these various outcomes and make a decision prior to. It being put on for. The full approval at, uh, town meeting.
So, where you, where you're standing, approved funding, request under a thousand will be included in the proposed general fund budget. Are we saying that we're, that those, or?
That are under a thousand?
Yeah. If we're gonna invest, my, my opinion, if we're gonna invest one, we should vet them all.
Right, I mean, I'm.
I'd rather just stick them in the.
The last few things that have come to the board that have any kind of social services relationship. Have all been over a thousand dollars, right? The folks that came for the opioid. Um, payout money, it asked for more than a thousand, I think the discussion you had about the historical society was a thousand, so.
At least maybe the only thing we look at is that if we do that, so they don't have to come to the, they, they, a lot of people going, borrowing over a thousand dollars.
There's an option for that.
Just thinking out loud here.
Peter, Peter, I got a question. So, before we divide up the pie, we have to know how big the pie is. So if there's no, no limit on this, everyone piles and makes more, you know, won't, won't the town or someone have to say, we're gonna give away. A hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna give away eighty, we're gonna give away sixty, whatever it is, because otherwise, the group prioritizing. All we'll do is say, just add more and more, and, I mean, as, as I envision it, so any thoughts on that?
Well, the, the only thing is that you have two large, uh, entities on there, it's the Senior Center and the visiting nurses, which, uh, come to about four fifty. Two fifty-three, fifty-four thousand dollars, so. It doesn't leave, if you set something maybe twenty-five thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars, it doesn't leave much progress, it's slim pickings for the rest of them. I mean, you got the bike, bike, uh, committee that comes in for five grand, uh, uh, Sam goes in there for four, and. I mean, there's a, quite a slew, which gets us up to some chunk of money.
Yeah, but how, how would the process work, and if the impulse would be to simply add more and more? Which is what's happened in the past, you just added more and more grants. And so unless there's some kind of a limit, I don't know how the, the committee would work, maybe I'm getting this wrong, does someone, do, anyone else share this concern?
Well, the, the numbers have been pretty stale, a heap of organizations, the amount has been increased, for the most part, other than I think the. Women's Freedom Center, that's the only new one I remember in the last, yeah, big two year.
Yeah.
Um, well, and then the bike committee, the bikes.
Yeah.
They, they added.
And then you got.
And the Social Society.
Well, yeah.
And then there's another one that, uh, that's, um. It's a criminal, uh, uh, assistance center that murders out of Parks Place.
Yeah, but it's still part of Parks Place.
And the Main, Main Street Arts wants to make a request as well for their educational programs. So, Main Street Arts has expressed interest in, in making requests to support their community education programs.
Well. Um.
There's.
Maybe, I don't know what. Maybe this committee should look at applications after we've done our budget. And said, okay, we're gonna give this.
You have to sort of have it done beforehand, because you put this on your warning for your annual meeting, so the idea would be that you do this for.
You do it while you're, the, the, the past, we've done it as the budget progressed, and the committee worked along, and then.
Right.
Then at the end, we make our recommendations, say, okay, these are the ones we recommend you do, and the rest of them, then put them out.
Because the honest answer is, if you decide that you go through this vetting process, and let's say you decided you're only gonna spend eighty thousand dollars, and you come up with what your rewards are. It doesn't stop these organizations from going and asking to be funded through town meeting.
They get a petition out, you know? If you put the required signatures, then we have to consider it.
The goal here is to give them that. You know, give them that opportunity, you know, the board would have a chance to do the vetting through the committee, the board would get the presentation from the committee. They would then decide if they support it, and once that decision's made, then those organizations still have an opportunity to come, as Peter said, participate in, in the, you know, the town. And petition beyond.
Right, so, so the committee could recommend, could, could pass, pass out, you know, twenty-five applications.
Sure.
But the select board would be the one to say, well, we can only fund these four.
The committee's gonna make a recommendation, but the au- the authority still rests with the board, what this does is create a vetting process. So that every one of them don't have to come into one, one of your meetings.
Mm-huh.
Because if we had to vet twenty-five social services organizations, imagine how many hours you'd need.
Yeah, we'd need to do it for hours.
Yeah.
It would be.
But we used to do like, you know, four or five at, at, at the meeting, and you, we went there.
So all we're doing is establishing a, a, a system for vetting.
Right.
And committees do some.
I mean, right now, we don't look at their nine nineties, we don't.
No, we don't look at that, then, before, we always just ask the question, you know. At, how, if they're multi, uh, jurisdictional or regional. Committee that comes looking for funding, who else is funding you besides this town rocketing? And if they're servicing Walpole, Westminster, Huckney, et cetera, et cetera, people, why aren't they contributing to, which would reduce. Our, our costs and spread it out a little bit more? So we wouldn't be getting the big gap.
Yeah, we also don't see their financial statements, to know, you know, what their overall budget is and how much this is contributing to, I mean, I, I think it's important to contribute. To social service agencies, because they take a burden off the town on certain things, so. It's important to support them, but you wanna make sure that. You know, they're a viable organization, that is, has a diverse group of funding.
Right.
Channels.
Right.
It's not over reliant on our, our money.
One, one pocket, right. Okay, well, we can obviously find this if we decide to adopt this and, and, uh, think about that thousand dollar thing, so, um. So, have we, uh, wanna make a motion to adopt, uh. To, uh, social services policy?
I just have one question, but how would the committee be appointed, how would the members of the committee be chosen, uh, and, and appointed?
Well, it's an ad hoc committee, so it'd be a board decision on how many members that they wanted to be on it, how, how you want it to be, uh, put together, Rick. So, as an ad hoc, you guys do anything you want, it doesn't have to be like a. Like the, the bike pen, where you guys have a specific.
Formal committee.
Formal committee that was ongoing.
That's, I think, we had three or four members that were there, that were on there, we had a couple from the public. And I know there's a board member, because I was on it myself, but, uh. And I can't remember if there was, I don't think there was a village, uh. Representative from the village board. So.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it no larger than five, just because it's a little cumbersome if you're going through all the materials.
It's, it's, you know, it takes too long, maybe it's just drying out.
And you could certainly ask people if they're interested in serving, right? We don't have to staff it right away, once you decide you wanna do it, we could put out a request.
Right.
Talk to people, see if people in the public might be interested, there might be some folks that maybe would wanna be part of that.
Yep, good.
My move that we, uh, accept the proposed social services policy.
A second there.
Alright, most mainly, and then, and then second is to adopt the social service policy as presented. Uh. All those, any further questions? Hearing that, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those both may, motion carries, and we'll start the signatures. Okay, let's move on to the post-contract for Rockhampton T A twenty-two, Branson Street, Addison Street.
So this, this has been. Um, so if you guys remember, we had previously authorized Wyndham Regional. As our coordinating, uh, agent to work with us on this grant that we received. So we're working through Wyndham Regional, they have a portion of this work that has to go through. A lot of the field work and some other services that have to be done. Through a, um, engineer, so they have recommended a contract here with D H B. As you can see, the total contract amount is roughly forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, the issue here is, we do have a local share as part of this, so that I think the grant award was like forty-five thousand. Somewhere in that neighborhood, and I think we have to pay, um, the balance, so. It's, at this point, it's more for the, the board to be. Aware of, you know, we're gonna be starting this work, and if you approve this agreement, which. It would make sense for us, since we're working through a third party to do that, to bring D H B in, and then you can see they have a pretty. Um, reasonable schedule here concerning the project itself, they've got a kickoff meeting, they've got all sorts of various. Uh, milestone dates here, with the idea that they would come back to this board. And present in January and, and have something, and. If there was something specific that was potential that the board wanted to then pursue. That was, was very important, that we would have that, at least in front of the board during our budget process, so we'd have the ability to then. Potentially look at going after other grants for implementation, that type of thing. And then they have a final report by May. But the real point here that I wanted to point out to this board was that. You know, they were doing an alternative presentation in January and have a report for you to, to take a look at sometime, and we're usually. So that. The next phase for these, once you've done these scoping studies, is to go after implementation grants, it's sort of the next logical thing to do. And most of those are an eighty-twenty, so depending upon what the recommendations are. We might have to look at some additional funding to, to implement. What the pro-toad alternatives that they come with might be, so. And this will be the same basic process that if we're successful getting a grant for the trail extension that we've applied for, it's the same basic process. And then, we're working, Betsy's gonna work on. This larger potential grant to look at. A, um, larger, uh, bike, what do they call that today? We sat on it. We've been on for two hours today, so.
Save Streets and Roads for All.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
In practice.
Yes. It used to be the safe routes to school, but they changed the acronym now, so it's save streets and roads four, with the letter, you know, with the numeral four, all, just cute. But that's the new program.
There is no slogan here, so you just need to contest us to go ahead with this, or?
So, at this point, yes, I just want the board to at least give us the, just, just. Do a general, since it's an appropriation, it was just, uh, a resolution to just say, yes, go ahead and. Work, you know, we will accept the contract and we'll work. With our, Wyndham Regional representatives on the local share. Um, since they'll be, they'll be the ones that will basically be administering this contract, so.
You say it's about pot value?
I think when it's all said and done, I don't, I don't think you're gonna spend the full forty-nine, so. So.
Go ahead, Rick.
Scott, this is focused on the Atkinson Street, uh, uh, school street intersection?
Correct.
Right.
And if you remember, we put together a while ago, an ad hoc committee of folks that'll be working on this, so there's some school representatives, there's representatives from the. Select board, so. You know, we'll be reporting back as this thing progresses, and then there will be some public. Meetings to vet what they come up with as we go forward as well.
Okay, so, is the board, uh. Consensus that we move ahead with this?
Sounds good, Jay.
Yep.
Alright, like, you got to go ahead, the, you can do resolution.
Yes, the resolution system appropriations is easier for the.
Time to move on, we'll get it.
All design. Yeah.
I can commit tomorrow, or whatever, sign it.
Okay.
That way you can.
Very. So, we need a resolution to say we approve.
What? Resolution to adopt the local share.
Local share of the Rockhampton. Let's have T A twenty-two, something study.
That would be great. Yep.
So I moved that.
You guys wanna, or you wanna sign it, or?
They authorize, fingers on.
That's perfect.
Okay. Very.
Second.
We should vote since in appropriation.
Let's second it.
Yeah. Okay, most mainly, seconded to, uh, get a resolution to approve the, uh, contract for the Addison Street. Wow, study. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I, myself to sign it. At that. Okay, all those in favor again, shall we say aye?
Aye.
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 All those both may, motion carries. Uh, discussion at town meeting participation, anything something Bondi wanted to throw on here?
Yeah, well, have you talked about what we're gonna do, any, any ideas, or?
Well, I think we're looking at perhaps moving it upstairs to the theater.
Right. Uh, community outreach, uh, you know, any, any, any. We wanna form a little committee to work on this, a little ad hoc.
I have one, I'm guessing, how about moving it to Saturday, has that been considered?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that in the past, but, um, it's. It's never really got off the ground.
Why not?
Has there been a setting? Have they done?
We've never done a setting, no, uh.
Okay.
People used, used to come in, because it's, um, day before vote, um.
Well, they know it's in the evening, and it's, it's usually cold still, sometimes.
Well, we've been discussing it until a later time in the year, and then elect may, or, or something like that, but that didn't fly either, so.
Well, I think a Saturday afternoon might fly, but why didn't it ever get off the ground?
No interest, it's like, it's polar apathy.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say.
Polar apathy is what we're trying to come back to.
Do it on a Tuesday night, where, which is the traditional night that people.
Right. It's so used to.
You hear people who say, oh, I come from Saturday night, would come, but then, when you, if you, you don't see any other communities that have it on Saturday, for the most part, don't have any more.
Uh, Westminster has it on Saturday, doesn't it? Westminster has Saturday.
Yeah, Westminster, but they have it a week ahead of their vote.
Hmm.
And they do a lunch thing and everything else, so, I mean, you know.
Right.
I, I'm not sure if it's hot luck, I haven't talked to my contact much, when it's down there.
I think Bonnie, Bonnie makes a good point, getting people out on a cold night after they've worked a full day versus. And any, and versus people who are free on a, more people are free on a Saturday afternoon, and the energy level's greater, and the transportation. You don't have to drive in the dark, I mean, there, there are a lot of things I think to recommend to Saturday, uh, maybe we should.
I think, I think we should really put it back up on the table, I really do, um. Uh, it, it's probably easier for some people who feel it's cold. it it's probably easier for some people who feel it's cold air on a Saturday uh than on a, you know, in a weeknight and um.
Just out of curiosity, if you did look at a Saturday, what time would you be thinking? Is this like a twelve o'clock event, a two o'clock event, four o'clock event?
Yeah, I know you have to have your matinee movie.
No, I mean, it's just curiosity, just I don't know what would make more sense for people, honestly.
I I I think uh.
Ten o'clock in the morning? I really don't know.
No, I don't think so. I think maybe noon.
Noon?
Two. Two.
Two.
One thirty. People need to have lunch, right? People need to have lunch and, you know.
Okay, well, two. It just, you know, uh if it's a four hour meeting, then that gets into dinner time, but hopefully, I don't know. So I mean, I I think we should uh we should form some kind of little group to to kick around ideas on this. I I, yeah. I mean, if you get volunteers, you could do some kind of informer poll down at recycling, you know, and say, or you can even do one online, you know, Facebook online poll.
That's a good idea.
Would you would you prefer the Tuesday night or the Saturday? And Saturday was fun.
We can do that in a in a warm time of year. You don't have to do it in the middle of winter, but I mean, you don't make it.
Right. Uh yeah, why 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 don't we do do like a Survey Monkey Survey Monkey kind of thing? And just ask, it's several questions. And um when we were first putting together the town plan, back when I was on the planning commission before COVID and everything done, so uh we did a survey about the town plan. And we printed up, I think it cost five hundred dollars or something like that, little postcards. Just guessing that people take the survey and the link or two, just pass them out out of down at recycling and have some sitting around in the library in different places. And just to, you know, get all the participation again.
What was your response?
Um it wasn't as good as I thought it should be, but I I kind of thought it would just be thousands.
As I say, the only thing you're gonna get participation is if there's a there's a controversial issue on the budget.
Well, the response was actually good as the survey.
Are you changing mine again? You can change your mind.
I mean, when, no, I I wasn't happy with it because I thought it would be better.
But anyway.
But if I'm looking into a survey response, you know, it was about um uh twenty five, twenty percent of the car to put out, which is considered to be good, actually. I know, I was just saying, when we did our, whatever that thing was called before COVID, where the town got together and they picked whatever land they wanted.
Yeah.
There was a lot of people who participated in that. So I mean, part of it is getting someone, you have, they have to want to participate and only a handful of people tend to come, well, we had what, seventy maybe years, seventy five?
Seventy, seventy five maybe.
Um which was actually a lot more than a handful.
Well, we had, well, that did.
But I mean, and that was in the evening. That was in the evening. So all of those meetings were in the evening. So I I mean, yeah, maybe Saturday would be more beneficial. More people would show up and it'd be good to find out. But I honestly don't think it's gonna be too much of a difference. Well, why why don't we propose tonight to do a survey? Yeah. Yeah, and and work on it, work on how to get it done.
I'd be glad to, Bonnie, I'd be glad to work on that with you if you want anyone else to help you.
That would be great. Well.
And there's the idea that. We do a survey, there might be a way to have a field just for comments, so people would just, general comments.
Good idea. Good idea.
Yeah, it would be not just a survey on one question, you know, it would be a survey on. They would have to rate, like, what would be your first priority, I mean, for the time, would your first priority or your first choice would be Tuesday night, normal? Right. Um Saturday. There is things like that. And then, you know, then you're gonna ask, I don't know what other questions you're gonna ask. I mean, what would what would make you come to town, you know, what? Yeah, well, you know, do you do you think it's important to increase attendance at town meetings? Maybe say, how many times have you attended town meeting? So suppose Rick and I put our heads together and come up with with some survey ideas and then bring it back to the board. And then we'll think about how we want to, you know, promote the survey.
Alright.
Sound good?
So.
At some point, we just have to involve the schools because they.
I was just gonna say, I'm just gonna mention that. You gotta think about the school too. It's like, you're gonna have ours on Saturday, then where are they gonna do? Are they gonna have theirs on a different night? I mean, everyone likes to get calls up on the one.
The warning would be for one, one meeting, whatever that's gonna be.
Yeah, I know it is.
So, I mean, the last immediate schoolwork, and it goes last about fifteen minutes, I think, by the time they get done. I don't think it was very long after we got done, an hour.
Nope, it was it was fast.
Yeah, it was fast. Okay.
Okay. You guys haven't gotten. You'll get that, get back to us on the sixteenth, or you wanna wait until noon?
I'm, I get back on the eighth, Bonnie. I can work with you next week on it. What what do you want? You want to do by the sixteenth? You want to take more time?
No, let let's do about sixteen. Where are you?
I'm in Georgia.
Oh. He is a traveling man.
He is.
Saint Saint Simon's Island, where I will, I will tell tell you, I hate to say this, but the weather is gorgeous.
Oh, shut up.
It's colder, huh? I wanna hear that.
That's been great.
The sunshine. We don't wanna, we don't wanna have you charge.
Is that the sun out your window? Because we haven't seen that thing for a while.
Yeah.
Wow.
In the lunchroom.
Twenty seventies.
Okay, uh so let's go down to the financials. Uh any questions?
We got a list online, so if there's any particulars here.
I didn't see too much here when I ran through this thing. Page two of the twelve uh general line fire department charges. We had twelve six, twelve thousand seven hundred dollars. Was that the burn permits? Anybody know? We ended it in revenue.
No, that has not been paid, that I'm aware of.
Well, was where twelve six coming from? Anyway, I mean, it's nice that we got it, but kind of like, so where it came from, so as far as department charges, I feel like there's some of those.
Some of them is accidents on the highway.
Yeah, but I mean, that that's one, we can't figure out.
Yeah, the one some for the other, that that fairly large burn is.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sure this was an accident on the highway. Uh there was serious accident on the highway, yeah.
Obviously.
I just assumed for a live number for one, one, one of that.
Well, it was a, I think that's what they told us last time, that there was some major ninety one incident.
I think they used some sort of foam or materials or something, because that that's what I think.
And it was, you know, like, the company that, you know, a big trucking company or something.
That.
Can't remember, but.
So we're concerned about this uh transfer uh stage and permits, but access permits, we're we're running way behind on those one. I don't know why that's happening, but. I'm all set, doctors, it's a fair amount. Almost the end here. Two of four under the highway department. Uh we got two icons here, Alyssa, maybe just waiting for one of where Rockhampton both have funds on. One, it's a Depot Street Bridge. One is uh fifty eight hundred and sixty oh one and the other is sixty oh three. Why do we have two? One's got fourteen hundred dollars in it, nine dollars fifteen, and the other's got sixty four five in it. Four thousand five hundred dollars. I just wonder why we have two counts of this one. It's only one bridge. Hello? Are you with us? Hello?
Alyssa. Maybe she's not on her, she's.
She's there, maybe she's uh.
Yeah, did we, did we lose her?
That's not a big issue.
I'll check into it.
We'll look into it.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think we're coming up fine as far as.
Her audio, she just texted me. She said her audio is not working.
Oh.
Okay.
I'll see you tomorrow.
We'll follow, we'll follow up on it.
Give you a fair warning so you're running high, so I'm not telling you what time I'm coming. Anyone else have any questions? Hey, let's get down to review approval for order bills and warrants. I've seen them in front of me.
I guess I'm over there, Scott. I did not bring any down.
Alright, and we'll be here at next time. 认定的 items from May sixteen, twenty twenty three, playing, that's a couple weeks away.
We'll have a health officer appointment.
Oh, yeah, we got, and then uh Douggy wants to be on lock.
And we have a white guy appointment for.
So we'll, we got, I already emailed Douggy that we find him on the sixteen, so he's he's aware.
We're also gonna do an update on some of the issues on the train station for the board, so there'll be an update on that. Gary's been working on a couple of things. We want to bring the board up to speed on what's happening there. So we'll have that as well. Those are the only ones I can think of off the top of my head, and there's a couple of others you can.
And Rick and I are gonna bring that.
Oh, an update on the uh close survey.
I've got a question for you, Scott. Can you have a sec? Um the funding for the fire study, we, at the last meeting, we spoke that we were going to, if the Department of Agriculture grant doesn't come through, we were gonna use uh town money to get that ruling. Is that something that we need to vote on? How how will that proceed?
Yeah, I, we'll have to do a separate, I'm sorry, go ahead, Peter.
Go ahead. I think I was gonna say same to you, but.
We we would have to do an appropriation for that.
So do we want to do that?
I I think we should, you and I both agree that if we don't get it started, we're never gonna get there. So and it's it's, we should have it before we decide to keep spending money on equipment. So if it comes up, we don't need to be spending that kind of money.
Yeah, I think that consultancy cost would be minimal compared to, when you're talking million dollar fire trucks, um it'd be really good for us to have some information on how our resources are deployed compared to other communities and so on. So I think that I think the study would be a great investment.
So we haven't got it on the agenda for any action tonight, but we.
We're gonna have it for the sixteenth.
Yeah. And appropriate at that point.
Alright.
Is that alright?
Good, thanks.
I'll give them one last step for USDA, you know, they're.
He's been waiting, trying to get, but they're not moving off the dime, so.
They just don't commit to giving you any kind of indication as to when they're gonna give you an answer, which really.
I know the Saxon River Board is interested, they're very interested in this issue too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay, um anybody else? Hey, uh we got, I just want to join board, too. So we got a few on there already. It's tax sale policy and discussion, et cetera, et cetera.
We also talked about um if we're gonna talk about policing.
Right.
That was all the things we've done there. We had wanted to discuss.
It wouldn't be a bad idea that we just gave them the update you did, we're not tied about the EMS stuff. I'm not sure if they're.
Yeah, we can give it a little depth.
I'm sure the village may be aware of it, but I'm not sure if the Saxon River is, I would always think that press you out there, but they can't transport, so.
And we'd, we'd want to do an update, so. If anybody else, I think they.
I think we want to talk a little bit about sidewalks, didn't we?
Oh, well.
At the joint for or at the certainly could.
No, I think there was some mention of that, wasn't there? I think the village was interested in talking with us about it.
Yeah, I think Saxon River is interested too. So, yeah, sidewalks would be a good point to discuss. And the the walk bike committee also is very interested in sidewalks.
Okay, so we're gonna have a discussion on sidewalks then? I mean, it's money out there. I've already informed Saxon River, their village, made it there's money when that came up, because they want to take the sidewalks back. They just do a hundred feet of 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 sidewalk a year. You know how that is, by the time you get two, three years done, you gotta go back, start doing the other ones all over again, so you never gain anything.
Yep.
So, and we've done some fairly decent workouts, Saxon River, on their sidewalks, or some that needs some other attention, but you know, we work on it at a time and uh availability of contractors to do the work are available. That's what we've been having issues with, so. Okay, uh let's move on to other business. Uh Brett, you have any?
Nothing.
Well, I do anything.
Nope.
Fine.
Nope.
Cool.
No, just a question of where's the speech line gonna be going now that we're out of the snow?
I know that. You don't have the first location yet, so.
Parker Hill, we're interested.
Parker Hill is asked?
I've talked to people on road, Rockways, well, all of them, actually. Everybody, Chambersport Road is another one.
Alright.
But I mean, it's, it would be good to get some kind of.
We can start working on the schedule.
Schedule.
I think we should keep that sign out all the time, just going around to different areas.
Exactly.
You know, use it.
It was interesting reading the uh Saxon government is that they don't think those signs are very effective. Uh I know that the college, they have a meeting they had on there to discuss speeding up in Saxon River. And I know Westminster Town meeting in minutes or the same thing, they're claiming, well, their speeding issue down there.
Well, it's not necessarily effective, but we need to start getting the data for the
Yeah.
For the um sheriffs.
Right.
We need to know where the the hours and the areas that are.
Oh, yeah, I'm 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 not surprised, I took the most important, but just a um okay, um just to remind everybody, taxes do make attempts, and if you don't pay, the eight percent penalty kicks in, so save yourself some money. Also, Rick, uh Scott, reading in the uh Westminster minutes that they're gonna have us go down and paint some sidewalk or some uh school sign stuck down there. Are we charging them for that, or are they gonna do it free?
Charging Westminster for where? Down near the High School Theater?
No, down at the, their school in Westminster on School Street. It was in their minutes.
Oh, I remember that lady.
Box the, either you or the village, they actually said the village, because the village just was paying down there. Why would we be going down there painting their side? I mean, they they should paint their own, but that's.
I don't know, they're that discussion.
Well, it was in their minutes, you're in the last.
Oh, they're in their last minutes.
And I guess Mr. Perry is gonna talk to you about uh policing too, because last I mentioned the speeding issue.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we'll invite him to our tri board meeting. You and I have gone out there before.
Yeah, I know. Well, look at the night you went out there, and you could never get.
I sat. Yes, I invited him here.
Six o'clock, never got in, but it was an executive session.
Yeah.
Two hours sitting around.
Yeah.
And finally get lost. So there is a need to executive session on the leave you mentioned.
Yes.
So which, what do we?
It relates to uh, so it relates to contracts, Peter.
Okay.
So.
So.
And I'm the only person that has to be here.
Before we go there, I would like to send out a thanks to the negotiating, you mean negotiating committee, consisting of myself, Scott, Alyssa, and Heather, and Debbie Wright. Uh we are tentatively successful to this point, just waiting for
Oh, good.
gratification, so that that's one thing off our head. And Scott's on the straight and narrow, so uh much is, is is the grin that we kind of go nuts a couple of times.
Works out. Nobody, nobody came and blows.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have to beat anybody up.
Actually, had pizza one day. We'll pizza, peace party.
We had to do a contract, you said.
Yes, so you have to do the two resolutions.
Two motions.
Okay.
Alright, first motion is I move to find a free resort, don't call a public knowledge of contracts will clearly place in its valley of substantial advantage by foregoing our strategy, negotiating strategy. Do you hear a second?
Thank you.
Any, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
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 Are we supposed to be in executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which will be the reasons.
Oh, the reasons for it, okay.
Second motion is I move that the board enter executive session, discuss contract negotiations with uh I don't know who it is, so we can't say the company, but if not, if we don't, under provision of Title One section three one three of the law statutes. Do you hear a second? Main and seconded, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, end the executive session, as soon as we can get things organized.
Thank you, guys. I will um.
Invite the man.
Give you a minute here.
I get, I get testing the phone, I should change.
Elijah, Rick, if you can stay on and how else?
Perfect.
Let's do them.
Yeah. Betsy, I'll go, I'll um.
Can you take a picture of those um? What can you, what you? Well, I'm supposed to write this down and I portion of what you said and those two, okay.
Well, I'm supposed to write this down, and I, I get a portion of what you said, and those two, okay.